Meeting to order. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first proclamation is for Child Abuse Prevention Month for the April fourth eighteen uh twenty twenty-three. Whereas children are vital to Jackson County's future prosperity and quality of life. And whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing, and healthy homes and communities that foster well-being. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a publicly, public responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in Jackson County. And whereas to prevent child abuse, parents need support and resources to help cope with the stress and nurture their children to grow in their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed through partnerships created among citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, children's advocacy centers, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas Jackson County is committed to preventing child abuse and calls upon citizens from all walks of life to increase their participation in efforts to support families and thereby prevent child abuse and strengthen communities. Now therefore, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Jackson County and commends its observance to all citizens. Tonight, we have a few guests here from away. Paige Gilliland, the senior forensic interviewer and case manager, Maggie Gray, forensic interviewer and case manager, Ashley Cook, who is a victim advocate and victim outreach coordinator, and Kristen Brady, who is the administrative assistant from away. A few ladies have come up. We'll present you guys with y'all's proclamation. I'm sorry, we need to have a vote. So is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
So be it, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Carrie's unanimous. Now, you ladies will come up. We'll give you the real document.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for working on this.
Who's this person?
Mrs. Tuck, he is our newest staff member. He works with our kiddos.
He's beautiful.
He must be good friends. And thank you too for putting the kibble on the play on the courthouse, the old courthouse lawn. Hopefully they'll go by and see the kibble. Yes, Susan Mobley. Leave that for us.
Everybody got it? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all. Hey, you still up, I think?
He's a labrador.
Labrador.
He's listening really big, but this is what we got. He's a pet. He's available for pets.
Sounds he's available.
And we'd love for any of you to come out and see the renovations that you still appreciate.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Moving on now, we have another proclamation. For Public Health Week, April third through April seventh, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the Jackson County Public Health Workforce is a critical component of our emergency response to natural and man-made disasters and widespread disease outbreaks in our county, including COVID nineteen. And whereas our county and state public health workers have been courageous, inventive, and tireless in their work to perform their essential public health functions, oftentimes at risk of their own safety and health. And whereas public health measures to control and eliminate infectious diseases, improve environmental sanitation, and promote healthy lifestyle practices have been the greatest cause of improved health statuses and increased life expectancy for the residents of our county and all of North Carolina's residents. And whereas public health plays a critical role advancing health equity and preventing chronic diseases and injuries resulting in improved productivity and decreased healthcare costs for all North Carolinians. Whereas the Jackson County Board of Health is committed to a continued emphasis on prevention and public health and to helping our county and all North Carolina reach a better state of health through actions outlined in the Healthy North Carolina twenty thirty objectives. And whereas communities, local health departments, employers, hospitals, and healthcare providers, individuals and families, insurers, county leaders, and policymakers, safe place communities, and schools, and childcare facilities must work together to identify and develop innovative solutions to health problems facing the people of Jackson County. And whereas the Jackson County Board of Commissioners encourages all residents to recognize that public health is working to ensure that all residents are protected from the threats such as COVID nineteen, influenza, foodborne disease, injury, and chronic diseases such as diabetes, heart disease, and asthma. Whereas April third through seventh, twenty twenty-three has been designated as a National Public Health Week. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County, the April third through twenty-seventh shall be designated as Public Health Week in Jackson County and commend its observ- commend its observance to all county residents and convey our deepest gratitude to those public health professionals who serve our county every day. Do we have a motion for approval of this proclamation for Public Health Week, April third through seventh?
So moved.
Second, all of those in favor? Carrie's unanimous. In attendance tonight for Public Health Week Awareness Proclamation is Shelley Caraway, who is our health director. Ms. Caraway, if you will come on up. Did it right this time?
Too good.
That's a long proclamation.
I'm just gonna apologize for all those words. Public health is all about words.
It is.
And we do wanna thank you. This is great. We have a National Public Health Week. Our leadership is, that's just wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do.
Great. Thank you again for your letters.
Moving on now to approval of the agenda. If we see no amendments, I'll seek a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Looking at our approval of minutes, we have our work session and our regular session. If there are no changes to be needed to either of those, I'll seek a motion for approval on the fourteenth work session and the twenty-first regular meeting.
We have three, three minutes of those meetings.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Un? Carrie's unanimous. Moving on now to administrative reports. For my report, yesterday I was, I was fortunate that Department of Agent called and asked if I wanted to be the speaker at start kickoff of the senior games for our region. So I went and saw some of, some of our finest citizens participating. There were seventy total plus a few that have signed up for games from bowling to ball toss to basketball, putt putt, regular golf, track and field. It was really interesting to see bocce ball, cornhole, all kinds of things to just really kinda piggybacking on healthy health awareness week, get seniors active to reduce cancer, to improve blood pressure, and reduce the risk of diabetes. Just all good things. So I was blessed to see that and be a participant and can't wait till the medal awarding ceremony, May the fourth. So that's really all I have to report. It was great to be there and I couldn't thank them enough. Does anyone else have anything to report?
Sure.
Moving on now to changes needed to either of those. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So it's, you're, you're hearing an echo of your previous votes.
So have me.
So that was interesting. That was the first.
Saturday night live.
Yeah.
When we go live.
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, first item I have on my report, I did report this information via email. Yesterday, I was planning on giving an initial report to the board, but we did have Channel thirteen WLLOF. Basically come to the town and then I put this on the news. So I tried to provide this information to you yesterday, but to give you a little bit more detail, today, at approximately five fifty or five forty PM on Saturday, April first, a roof, the roof of really is a covered roof of vehicles is what got picked up by high wind and really thrown onto a couple of other roofing systems that were on transit. Now, I've got some pictures in here so I can specifically show you what had occurred. We were not made aware of this until Transit Director Miss Al did a phone call on Sunday, basically letting her know that this had occurred. At that point, Chair Parker, Public Works for Rethrow Maintenance, did go out there and try to develop the plan of action. And the plan of action included, very quickly got a roofing company with a crane in yesterday and ultimately was able to remove the debris off the top of the facility itself. Before we could go into operations, I needed to get code enforcement. There's a fairly decent impact that occurred on the facility. When you go in, the, the, one of the conference rooms, the ceiling tile was all the tracking and so forth, his bet and so forth. And it was just really lost from the impact of the roof landing on there. So I had code enforcement, Mr. Elders, go in and, and check out the facility and thankfully he didn't see any life safety issues. So we were able to get the facility cleaned up. We also had one of the fence relines get cracked open. When I first walked in there yesterday, it was still smelling well right. And so maintenance was able to go in and fix that and air out the facility and get it operational, basically. So I'm trying to say the transit is fully operational today due to real good work, I really have Public Works and Transit and all the employees. If you happen to see it on Channel thirteen, I think Kevin, Kevin from our maintenance, Mr. Starhead, you got to see the act. We were talking about today, I think he had the yellow hard hat on and apparently Rex Hunt liked the, liked that hard hat. Cause you film Kevin quite a bit, but I thought, I thought employees and maintenance and Miss Al now did a great job of moving forward. Bringing in, well, brought in roofing company, we were able to seal up the side of the facility that has finished space, finished pavement and shit right, carpet, ceiling tile, computers, offices, because it literally called raining problem. It was raining as they were finishing sealing it up. So luckily they got it sealed off on Monday right before that rain moved in. So everything is in the dry in regards to the finished base. The other part of the building is storage. We did get some leaky in there, but we're able to do some things around. We got, they got a, this isn't a new, new building. It's leaked on us before. So maintenance has, I can't remember what they call it, it's basically a catchment system that ultimately allows you to hang it, attach the leak and pipe it out of the building. So we were able to set that up. So no real damage, additional damages occurred. We did have the insurance adjuster come out today at one PM. He's there for a couple hours and he won't have a report probably begin in next week. I'll go ahead and start getting roofing companies in to start, give us pricing. We're gonna get a couple of pricing, but this is an emergency situation. So that does allow us to move a little bit quicker after we understand what the insurance is received. I'll jump to the pictures. So this is up from Animal Rescue Center. And so I wanna focus, if everybody's seeing my pointer ass, this is the, some of the support columns through itself. You can see a sitting on, this is the metal building. This is the thinnest area that I'm discussing, describing to you. This is the storage area. This is a metal roof and that is a membrane roof. And the, this entire roof was basically approximately right on that pointer ass and I, it was apparently it blew up in the air. It impacted this membrane roof and then also landed on the metal roof.
Oh, right.
Yes, it's like an overhang. Now what's amazing is we had vehicles parked there. I'll tell you, I'll tell you, this, this kinda shows you right here. You can see where my pointer is. You see that vehicle right there. It was parked there. Let me go to the next. So you can see the column, it's sideways, I understand, but, but you can see the column, you see the vehicle, the vehicle was touched. Which is, it's actually pretty amazing. So you can see where the motor vehicle is where basically the columns had collapsed and fallen. And so ultimately, as you scroll along, I go to the next pictures, you can see that if you just see it from the roof, from the top, it just looks like a shorter piece, but it's a fairly long roof that landed on our building. You see it also blocked the main entrance and then caused damage to the front area there. So the roof is, this is the membrane. You can see where it hit and ripped that roof. But we also feel like here, I went up there with the guys in the roofing company, felt like there was pretty good damage of the, the underneath here of really the support. We don't put support beams, but, but just, there is damage there that there'll have to be quite a bit of replacement. There's just not going to be sealing up that scene. Now, I can't tell you, the roofing company is coming in tomorrow and they're gonna go ahead and seal that up. So that we, as we're getting quite too into session, we're just trying to keep everything in the dry until we get, till we get things fixed. Insurance crews out and they agreed, yes, we need to get everything sealed up while we're getting bids and ask how to repair all this. You can see the metal building, I know it's sideways, you can turn your, your printer, direct it, but ultimately you can see there's damage to the metal building itself. And there's also damage to the front of the facility. So when you, when you go back and look at the overall aerial picture, you can see we'll have damage along this portion of the roof. We'll have damage really all the way across. These are single sheets of metal. So it's not just repairing the hole. We'll have to replace from, from the end to the gutter, all the way up to, to the peak of the gable there. And so you'll have to do several sheets there, but this is guessing, make a professional roofing company out there and they'll tell us exactly what needs to be repaired. And so again, I just, I wanna say shit to Miss Al and Mr. Parker and their employees. And everybody worked as quick as I could, kept everybody safe. Luckily, nobody was in there when this occurred. You know, luckily I didn't get picked up and get thrown in the road and thrown somewhere else. Ultimately, all things being said, I believe we're fortunate. I do wanna mention too, that we had a lot of high wind events that day. Nine one one received over a hundred and fifty calls that Saturday about high wind events. And we had emergency services, now fire trucks and that nature down, brush fires, power lines, debris in the road, base. I got a hundred and fifty calls, it was within about a twelve hour period. So I wanna just extend thanks out to our nine one one center and our emergency services folks that had a pretty busy Saturday just responding to all of these incidents. We're just fortunate, the only other thing that we had for the county is in this facility itself. We did have some power out of this here that impacted our cooling system. And so we had to do some research and replacements and some items for, for cooling system. Luckily, we had spear cord yesterday and luckily it was a nice cool day. And we didn't tell anybody and nobody complained. So it all went well and, and the court room stayed, stayed at a decent temperature and was able to follow through and get everything fixed and everybody knew, knew any difference. Appreciate right now for working on that. It's important to say that. Next item is just upcoming announcements. This park we wanted to made it to provide best information to the board and the public. We do have on April eighteenth at nine AM to one PM at Park Watson Park, we have household magic waste collection event. People can bring their paints, aerosols, smammable liquids, bleachers, and fluorescent cleaners. They'll all be collected. It is for residents of Jackson County. So if you've got pick cans, store it in your garage and things of that nature, collect them all up and bring them to Mark Watson Park. It's a nice service that we just try to provide to our citizens on our handways. The other is the coming up, see, April sixteenth to the twenty ninth in partnership. This really coincides with North Carolina Department of Transportation Clean and Sweep. The Jackson County Keep Our Mountains Clean and Green Letter Cast Forest, a whole annual spring litter pickup event. This is where Jackson County will provide supplies to groups who wanna go out on roads and pick up garbage. We'll supply the bags and gloves and things of that nature. As you can see, we ask people just not get in main corridors because those are dangerous corridors. Those get cleaned up in a different fashion. But ultimately, I'm pleased to, I'm sure, recall, if you're interested, of, it's a sort of a mini adopted road section to go clean up. And we, we try to provide people all the supplies and materials they need to do so. And so we just encourage everybody to participate in cleanup, whether before or after. It's just cleanup, thinking that way. Next is constructing. Make sure, excuse me, while I scroll back up. So Animal Rescue Center, final items on that facility are being completed. The grading contractor will be on site actually this Thursday to finalize site issues. If you recall, one of the main things is trying to get everything stabilized for people to use. We do have people going out on the weekends right now and utilizing the dog park, although they're technically not supposed to be. We were getting complaints of why our small bathroom was not open yet, but well, it's because the facility's not open. I will say this to the public who's using it, it's been no good deal to use it at this point. There are some grading things and things we're gonna be doing to the main interest of that dog park that we are gonna have to secure it out of. So I just, people need to give it a few more weeks for everything to stabilize. And the next week or two, grading contractors will have that whole front end tore up, fitting and controlling some water issues that I'm having right at the beginning. And so, but it is good to know that people are just raring to go and utilize that dog park. You know, we do have the, we have the dog baggie containers and so forth. And when I was up there with the contractor and we're going through the pipe testing, the, John blew the load and he left him, it was full. So apparently it's getting used more than we're aware. And so hopefully that's a good sign. We'll get open this summer. I can tell you that I'm meeting with the transition team, transition team, many Public Works and Health Department and Animal Rescue tomorrow. And we will be pulling the trigger on a thirty day transition plan. We are transitioning into that facility. We feel comfortable enough. We just got a handful of items left to get a certificate of occupancy. And so we're to the point now that I know that the grader's coming in. And the grader, he'll be done in a couple of weeks. We will be ready to transition in a month and that facility will be operational about the third week or so of May. I'd like for the staff to get in there and work through a little bit before we have a grand opening. But having said that, it is an open facility. If anybody wants individual tour, we can go out there and do an individual tour. Hopefully in a month or two, we'll have a grand opening and just invite the public and everybody to be involved with the project. Next is the Forest Center, fittings over ninety percent complete, lock anchors complete, necessary foundation work started. Chair began on structure steel, she began building a tannin wall and pouring concrete, all of the pump and chemical rings. One of the ones I just wanna inform this board and also the public too, I've included an email that I had sent to the Board of Elections regarding this facility. And you can see I did get a response from Mr. Stevens, the Chair of the Board of Elections, saying they'll definitely be addressing the issue for the municipal election in the twenty twenty-four primary. And so what I've done, I just informed the Board of Elections of the construction schedule at this point. And I just talked about that, as there were those extension, extensive renovations occurring at the Polley Recreation Center. Just a reminder for the board, you know that, to the public, this is a polling site. And so as you're aware, with polling sites, there are multiple rules that are required to be applied with as an election takes place. Rules that require distance and things of that nature. And so every year, for every election, the county government works with Board of Elections on multiple sites to try to prepare and get these sites ready for a good as a test for election. So you can see what I'm saying is I highly recommend that the Board of Elections examine other alternative locations and move of the Polley Web Center for the upcoming county election. Jackson County, what we did do on this previous election, from board's information, everybody's information is we actually, if you recall, we were doing work on the backside, but now parking is being utilized for the entrance. And we delayed a few things, not just for a week or two, to basically not interrupt anything with elections. I didn't want anything impacting people's access, election things of that nature. So we delayed some things to make sure we work with the Board of Elections on this. But the reality is, is for the upcoming election, the current estimated substantial completion date for this project now is March twentieth of twenty-four. And so that's, you know how primaries need, but that generally, especially since this is a presidential election, that's more likely gonna be when we see a primary coming in. Now, I know all that's gotta be decided later. But ultimately, that's best case scenario. We're more than happy, we'll have, the contractor will have reasons to delay. And you know, whether it be weather events and things of that nature. That is when a certificate of occupancy would be issued as that substantial completion. So nobody can enter it. No matter who has legal authority to do what, nobody can enter these facilities until that certificate of occupancy is issued. So from that standpoint, because I can't guarantee access to that parking lot. Now, it's not just outside of the building, it's the whole parking lot, all of that. Then what would happen is that primary will be delegated to have to come in to exist in smaller parking lot, outside entrance. And that's where I'm basically just informing the board that a facility cannot be utilized. See, I'm forming the board that more than likely legal access to new facility in partnership will be later in three twenty twenty-four. This means that the Board of Elections are most likely to have to use the existing old facility in its current place or current, current state. As they may or may not be aware, many aspects of the current center operations have been significantly modified. And this cannot be corrected until we're done with the construction. And so again, it's highly recommended the Board of Elections examine other alternative locations in lieu of the Polley Rec Center. And I state otherwise, the Board of Elections will be using a facility that may not be fun, that may not future meet election needs. So this is a year away. We got plenty of time to talk about this, discuss this. This is why I'm just at this point openly trying to have this conversation. This is why I'm just at this point openly trying to have this conversation with the Board of Elections, with this board, with the public in general. Because at this point, I cannot guarantee that that facility would meet the needs of elections. And we all want the Board of Elections to be empowered to to put on fair and open elections for everyone. And so again, they're looking at it. They've acknowledged the recommendation. And then now, whatever the Board of Elections chooses to do, then Jackson County will work with them the best we can to do the best we can to help them get their facilities ready for elections. Next item is it's the, I am pleased to announce outward for us is offered to amend our current grant contract for the construction of a new domestic violence chapter. This amendment will add an additional hundred seventy four thousand five hundred dollars to their grant award. We've already previously discussed this. And so this new grant award totaled two million three forty eight nine ninety seven fifty from Dogwood. This allows Jackson County to move forward with the design as proposed eighty two hundred square foot facility. If you're, just a reminder, and I'll have more details for the board at this next work session. But original design was about seven thousand square feet. As we went through schematics and really went through the needs of the Center for Domestic Peace, that was determined, we needed about eighty two hundred square feet. And we had a cost difference associated with that. And Dogwood has stepped up and is willing to be a financial partner with us in that in that cost difference. And so, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing is just for y'all's information and for the public, we do have, oh, yeah, Eisenberg here. She is, she is with Campbell T. and Pete Campbell. And and as you recall, as we were discussing having our hiring Miss Bechtel as your county attorney, that we're going to use the law firm to some sometimes like converge for these meetings. And so I'll just go down the line. If you look at April eleventh work session, we'll have Patrick Scott attending the meeting. And then Miss Bechtel will be at the April eighteenth meeting via Zoom. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Does anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, sir. We do have it. It's up.
Mr. Silver?
Chair of the board, thank you for having me today. I am the four-week-old opposition field representative for Congressman Chuck Evans. So I'm serving April twenty west, and that includes Jackson County. I'm living in Jackson right now, but I was born and raised in McDowell County. So I don't know if I can quite consider myself mountain folk, maybe foothills, okay? But nonetheless, I've lived in western North Carolina my entire life, been a part of this community, love this community, love the mountains. And I'm very excited to serve in this this role now. Before this, I was McDowell County's management assistant, assistant to our county manager. And I was also the clerk to the Board of Commissioners. So I feel a little bit of your pain, I know a little bit of what you guys go through and but and also the fun that you guys get to have. And local government, there's nothing like local government in terms of impact. So thank you for everything you guys do for our our local people. You know, I just want to say real quick, and I won't be long, but I'm here available. I'm in the county. I hope you've seen a trend of us being very available. And I've I've met many of you before. I've already met the county manager. And I've met with two of your municipalities already. So I'm going to be very present anywhere you guys want me to be. Just give me a call. You've all got my cell phone numbers and I'll be there. Okay? And and that goes for the congressman too. He he'll be here anytime you guys need him. He's already been in office hours to be in Jackson County soon. I think he's already been in Jackson County at least once since he got elected. And so, you know, that's a trend that we plan on keeping up regardless of what season it is, election season, whatever we will be. So, you know, while we're happy to help you guys, you know, I I feel like coming from local government, you guys have a lot of resources in the state and maybe some some good contacts. But federal government can always be very, very difficult to navigate. So we're going to try to remove that from you guys because we provide some money, but ultimately you got to provide the service. So, you know, if you guys want to provide federal, if you guys want to help people with federal services, if you've got folks who have problems with federal agencies, I'm just a call away. And we'll do everything that we can on our end to get that fixed. That's kind of our casework. We do veterans benefits, we do disability benefits, anything that's related to federal agencies. We we work through that. It's very impressive what the congressman can do with the phone call or letter. And he does it all as well. The congressman is on three committees right now. That's very important for you. He likes to say that you guys are in three committees because he really does consider how he votes based off what you guys tell him. And so I encourage you to to reach out and talk to us and tell us how you think he should vote on these things. He's on the budget committee, which is very important to Jackson County, very important to y'all. Appropriations, you know, that's very important to you guys and your projects. He's on the transportation infrastructure committee. And he's also on the government oversight committee. And for a freshman congressman, that's unheard of. Usually they get one committee, maybe two, but he's on three because he everyone knows he's here to work. Another thing we can help with is grants. So any federal grants you guys have, just let us know. We'll write a letter of support. You'd be happy to defer our security in behind that. So thank you so much again for having me. Again, you know, you've got my cell and I really mean it. Invite us to whatever you want us to be at. Call me anytime, day or night, four o'clock AM. I don't care. That's fine. And then we will be in Jackson County with our mobile office, the Carolina Cruiser. It's going to be red, white and blue, and we'll have all kinds of signs out. We'll be there in silver at Bridge Park on April thirteenth. And that's going to be nine AM to eleven AM. So that's next Thursday. So I'm happy to take any questions if you got them. But if not, I'm just very happy to be here and be a part of your community and be a friend to you guys.
What was that time again, please?
That's the nine to eleven. Yeah. And if citizens want to come talk to us, there's a chance the congressman will be there. We don't know exactly yet, but we will definitely be there as staff. If citizens want to come talk to us, they're welcome to. I'd recommend that they get there by ten thirty. Those lines can kind of get long. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you. A lot of information. Moving on now to consent agenda portion. And welcome, Ms. Fox, for our financial report for February twenty eighth. How you doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
I'll go over the highlights for February. Sorry, I missed the last meeting.
You missed. I can tell you that much. Take them faster.
I'll go over the highlights for the month of February. The general fund revenues collected to dates, sixty four million four hundred and forty eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. That's seventy four point oh seven percent of budget. So it's over about seven point four percent. The expenditures to date are at forty nine million three fifty seven three fourteen. That's sixty point fifty seven percent of budget, and they're under six point ten percent. The revenues are twelve million ninety one thousand five hundred more than the expenditures. The airborne taxes collected are at ninety eight point fifteen percent of budget at forty one million six forty six eight seventeen. And the motor vehicle taxes collected is one million seventy thousand nine sixty. That's sixty point ninety one percent of budget. The prior year taxes collected, three hundred and forty four thousand three fifty eight. That's forty nine point sixteen percent of budget. We did see a decrease in the sales tax that we received for February. That was for November sales. It was down seven point ten percent. The amount is one million six twenty eight nine eighty six thirty. And the Article forty six distribution was a hundred and seventy seven thousand eight oh four forty. The average for the fiscal year, seven point four three percent above last year. But we have since received two payments for December and January sales. And both of those are, December sales was up nine point ten percent above last December. And January's was thirteen point oh four percent more. So that was just one month that we saw that decrease. The landfill disposal fees collected is two million seven hundred seventeen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. That's ninety three point forty three percent of budget. And the prior year disposal fees are forty nine thousand eight fifty four. That is sixty two point thirty two percent of budget. The growth revenues that we're tracking. Planning is above budget at this time. We saw a slight decrease in building inspections, code enforcement. But environmental health and registered deeds are above where they should be for this time. The general fund contingency balance at the end of February is four hundred and seventy seven thousand six thirty nine. I'd be glad to answer any questions on the report.
Ms. Fox, on that December of twenty two and January of twenty three, the delay on the sales tax, what what reason would that be?
They always run behind. So we haven't received the January sales yet. We won't receive it until April the tenth. We just got notice of it today.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Not, I'll seek a motion for approval of the financial report. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Stribling?
Yes.
Chairman Lutzen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to new business. Welcome, Ms. Caraway, again, to go over the local child facility prevention team's annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and and all commissioners for letting me have this opportunity to come before you and talk about the work and the purpose of the Child Fatality Prevention Team. And since we have some new commissioners, and honestly, I'm not sure even the ones that have been here well know much about the Child Fatality Prevention Team. It's kind of a quiet group. So I thought I'd take a minute to kind of give you a little bit of history, kind of what we do and why we do it. It actually, the North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention System started back in nineteen ninety one. And basically, they're just trying to understand child deaths in North Carolina. And then by understanding and looking at them, then they can maybe come up with some things to prevent some, especially if it had to do with something in public service, the services we provide. So they set up a three-tier system. The first thing that they set out was the State Child Fatality Prevention Team. That sits in the office of the medical examiner. And then they have the Legislative Study Commission that they call the North Carolina Child Fatality Task Force. That's in DHHS Secretary's Office. But then in nineteen ninety three, they established two local child fatality review teams that are required now in every county. Those two types of teams are first, the Community Child Protection Team, CCP Team. That's overseen by DSS and chaired by DSS. And they review child death cases that have had some involvement from DSS or have some suspected abuse or neglect. And then the Child Fatality Prevention Team, CFPT, we just love our acronyms, is overseen by local public health. And we review the rest of the child deaths, the ones that didn't have any of that going on. And by the way, a definition of the child death is up to age about eighteen. So zero to seventeen is a child death. Now, both teams are basically reviewing all the records that we can gather that are related to a child death. And then you assess them, you can recommend changes on what you could do to maybe have prevented this death in the future. And then maybe even implement some of the changes that we come up with or pass them on to who can implement them. Everything's confidential, very confidential. And the records could include medical examiner reports, some death transcripts, police reports, DSS reports and other records. We're very blessed to be able to get ahold of about any record we want. And it's all very confidential, like I said. But back in two thousand eighteen, here in Jackson County, I mean, if you think about these two teams in every county that they set up, they also set out in the law who has to be on these teams, much like they do like the Board of Health and DSS Board. Well, every time we would go to a meeting, we'd look around and we'd see the same people. The same people are on this team as were on that team. So we just said, why? And that happened since Walco. Why in the world are we having two meetings, even though it was a different test? We're the same people with submissions are very closely aligned. So we each manually voted to merge the teams. And the state proved. As a matter of fact, right now, the state is pushing for all counties to do that. There were always some counties that had done it. We didn't come up with the idea. We just said, that really makes sense for us. So we have a merged team. However, since the state has not separated, I mean, urged all the counties, we still have to report to separately. So that's why I'm here tonight for the Child Fatality Prevention Team from the Health Department. But to give you an idea who comes together at these meetings, we have law enforcement, DSS, District Attorney's Office. There's always a community action agency, and for us, it's always been awake, which you just saw. Mental health, guardian of ad litem, health department, school system, healthcare providers. Thank goodness we get our medical examiner and daycare providers. And our meetings may go a little longer, but it's so much more efficient to do it. And I just have to say we're blessed in Jackson County because DSS and Health Department, we already have great collaboration, but we have so much to do that we're always looking for ways to do it a little more efficiency. So that that's why we decided to merge the teams and it's really worked out. So back to why I'm here, like I said, I have to do the CFPT report until they merge them and we can come together. But we are required to give this report to the county commissioners and to the county board of health. We just did that at our recent meeting with the child fatality report. No action is required unless one of the recommendations might need some support from the commissioners. But you don't have to vote on this report. No action's actually needed. But we also submit these findings, just so that you know, to the state. We it's a statewide team coordinator. Again, no identifying information about these children goes forward. But the state task force, the state team and the local CFPTs use this information to really make real changes. I want you to know that in the history of this, policies and laws are passed. Sometimes it's just to share information. It creates education campaigns or prevention campaigns. Sometimes it inspires us to go out and get grant money and actually come up with something that nobody does yet. So there, and honestly, to really bring the point home, I mean, I looked it up over the history of all the way back to the nineties of the Child Fatality Prevention System. And it's pages and pages of funding, laws passed, accomplishments. So it really has made a difference. For example, one that might just bring it home is the child passenger safety laws. In nineteen ninety four, they passed the infant seats. In two thousand and four, they did the booster seats. Those laws were passed in part due to the Child Fatality Prevention Recommendations coming forward, saying kids have got to be kept safe in cars. So I'm not going to go with all the other examples, but just know that every year there's a legislative agenda that comes out of the data that they get from us. So that's who we are and what we do in Jackson County. And as to the report, I think you have it in your packet. It looks something like this. And I'm not going to read this to you. But just now, the big thing I want you to know and also in all these reports is the data is always a year behind. So this is the twenty twenty two report, and we reviewed deaths of twenty twenty one. So we had two to review. And for this report, both of them were infants, and the definition of infant is less than one year. Once they're one, they're a child. So we did have two. One was due to a genetic birth defect. And the second was classified as unknown. And just so you know, sudden infant death syndrome, SIDS, is extremely difficult to prove. So often when it's unknown, we kind of think it's probably SIDS. And so we think about that when we're talking about recommendations. So what we came up with with our recommendations this time is simply more genetic testing, which we're working on even in the Health Department, and more education about safe sleep practices. But I want you to know, even just in the time I've been here, it's gotten better. It seems like safe sleep comes But I want you to know, even just in the time I've been here, it's gotten better. We, it seems like safe sleep comes up a lot, co-sleeping or you're not putting them on their backs. And so we'll continue to encourage more education on that. So please do take time to review the report, but especially at the very end, because that's the part which shows some of the positive uh, accomplishments that we've done as a group. I mean, the Health Department is very involved in this. This is our, our team, but we also house safe kids and with our safe kids program, we partner with a ton of people and do a ton of events all dealing with child safety and health. And so, but in closing, I really do want to thank the commissioners for your awesome support of the Health Department. Uh, it, it's always been wonderful for us. And I thank you for your time tonight. I know I can go on and on and on, but, um, if you have any questions, just let me know.
I do have one. Um, if a, if a child is transported out of the county, has it been registered with our county or will it go to Montgomery?
No, uh, we review all deaths of the residents of this county, no matter where they die. And the reports do come to us. That's another reason why it takes a year. There's a lot of records to collect. The state sends us all children that have died anywhere that were residents of our county.
What about children that's not residents of Jackson County that died in Jackson County?
They will go to the county of their residence. Yeah. So we're truly looking at our residents, our citizens.
That's great. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions from the press tonight? With, uh, no need for a closed session today. Uh, we do have some announcements with our work session on April eleventh at one. Our public hearing and, uh, UDO amendments on April eighteenth at six twenty five. And then our regularly scheduled meeting that same day at six thirty. Without any additional comments from the board, I'll, I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
Would you adjourn?
A second? All in favor? Post? None? We are adjourned.